Senator Beckford.
Present.
Counselor Ward.
Present.
Counselor Pesky.
Present.
Counselor LaRicheau.
Please excuse.
Counselor Mason.
Here.
Counselor Lunt.
Here.
And at this time, we'll also open the Water Department meeting and the roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Wells.
Here.
Commissioner Doherty.
Here.
The next item would be welcome remarks.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out. There's two sessions tonight. One, the Water Department will go first and talk about their bond initiative. And then, directly after that, you'll have a chance to ask questions. I request you please come to the mic so everybody can hear what the question is. And we're limited to three minutes. So, everybody gets an opportunity to speak. Directly after that, the town will open up their public hearing. And we're going to give you a PowerPoint presentation and walk you through from the beginning to where we are today in the Rumbell Mill Bond and how we got to where we are. I'll be speaking. Our code enforcement officer, Dennis Douglas, will be speaking. Our economic development director and our planner will be speaking as well. Tracy Stuber and Amanda Bunker. So, at this time, I'll hand...back to you.
Thank you. Twelve, the first item on the agenda. Hang right on. The first item on the agenda would be the Water Department bond. Are you taking both bonds up at the same time or the one of Frost Hill?
Good evening. Lisbon Water Department is looking to borrow money in November for two projects. And the two bonds will be listed separately in November. One is to replace the water main in Frost Hill Avenue. And also, a short section on what's called Andrews-Coggan Street or Road or Boulevard. I'm not sure what it is. But anyway, a short section of pipe there. This pipe is transite pipe and has given us some problems in the past. It's a soft pipe and is subject to being broken, for lack of a better word. A few years ago, we had a line put in underneath the Sabatish River and underneath Route 196. ETTI did that for us, I'm guessing, probably five, six years ago now. So, that will not have to be touched. But the rest of it would be taken care of up to about where the Holy Family Trinity Church is. That main would be replaced with a new main and hopefully eliminate our problems that we've had. One of the problems that we've had with that main is the depth. It's been very, it's very, very deep. It's around 12 feet deep in some places, which makes it very costly to try to repair. And the other bond issue that we have is for a new water tank in, on Upland Road of a million gallons. We have negotiated with Mr. Uplam a small portion of land to be purchased and build a water tank there. The reason for this is for fire protection and to give us a secondary route for water from Lisbon to Lisbon Falls. You may not be aware of it, but most of our water does come from Lisbon. It's transported down to Lisbon Falls by pipeline. And if something were to happen to the older pipeline, let's say in the old Lisbon Center area, Lisbon Falls could be in dire needs of water. So, we have replaced the main in Upland Road. The town replaced the main in Route 9. This is the second phase to this. We worked closely with the councilors at that particular time to try to get this line in to help the people on Route 9 that had contaminated wells due to salt. And we believe that that has been taken care of and we could now service anybody else who has a contamination problem. The...I think what I would like to do at this particular time is turn the technical end of it over to our engineer, Tim Sawtell, Dargo Engineering from Waterville. And, Tim, you want to give us a brief overlay of what's going to happen?
Yeah, I can tell about the...a little bit about the tank. The water system currently has two tanks, one in Lisbon. That's a...if it's not 100 years old, it's gone close to it.
1922.
1922, so 90 some odd years old. And one in the Falls, which is a very tall tank. They're both painted tanks made out of steel. The one in Lisbon is riveted, the one in Lisbon Falls is welded. The Lisbon tank is pretty much outlived its useful life. And the one in the Falls is not in bad condition, but it's probably halfway through its useful life at this time. The big issue with these tanks is it costs a very large amount of money to paint them every 20 years. And they're at different elevations, so it complicates operating the water system for the Water Department. The proposal is to put one tank, a dual-chamber tank, up on Upland Road that can serve both systems from one place with being two chambers. The tank, whole tank doesn't have to be offline for servicing or cleaning or maintenance in the future years. And allowing to, the Water Department, to, in the future, avoid having to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars per tank when it's time to paint them every 20 years. So, we did a lifecycle cost analysis. And I know it's a lot of money to build a new tank, but the net cost to the Water Department over the life of the new tank is less than maintaining the two existing tanks and ultimately or eventually replacing, you know, the one in Lisbon when it needs to be replaced or when the maintenance costs or repair costs exceed what it's worth paying. So, the proposal is to put the tank up on Upland Road a little bit higher than the hydraulic grade that the current Lisbon system is at to help alleviate low-pressure problems on Frost Hill Drive and some other parts of the system that are higher. And also, with the tank on Upland Road, it will provide a point where the pressure is locked in, if you will. So, demands, fire flows, broken pipes, or other things that may drop the pressure in the higher parts of the system, the tank on Upland Road will tend to maintain the pressure much better in those areas than it does now with one on the streams of the system. Anything you guys want to add to...yeah. I guess if you have questions of a technical nature, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. For those that you don't know me, I'm Paul Adams. I'm the general manager of the Water Department. And just a brief synopsis of what I gave you here tonight. There's a handout on the Frost Hill project. Basically, there's two maps and a cost for labor and a cost for material. I just wanted everyone to be aware of where the money's going and what it's for. Again, we've had probably six breaks in the last three years on this piece of pipe. And for those that live on Frost Hill, you'll remember, I believe it was two years ago, we had three breaks within 48 hours. It's a pretty bad piece and we really need to replace it. The next packet is the standpipe packet. And I gave you a couple of pictures of what we're looking at for a standpipe. This is one that was actually built in Farmington. The one we're going to build is a little bit taller and a little bit bigger around, but this is basically what it's going to look like. And then, as Tim described on the lifecycle, I left, or I put in there a lifecycle with the current standpipes and what it would cost to maintain those for 60 years. And then, there's a lifecycle for a new tank and what that would cost over 60 years. And as you can see, it's cheaper to build a tank than to try to maintain the two tanks that we have now. And finally, the last page is a rundown of the basic expenses for that new tank. And then, the last page I gave you was kind of a projected change in rates based on what we borrow. We are asking for a total of $2.4 million, but certainly, anywhere we can reduce that cost and cut that amount, we will. We just, without going through the bidding process and getting quotes on material, we have to go with a higher price and then adjust down as we get those quotes in and figure out what the actual costs are going to be. Are there any questions?
Is the new tank supposed to be riveted or welded?
Could use a mic.
She asked the question. I'll savor the walk. If the new tank was going to be riveted steel or welded steel, it'll be neither. It'll...it's a precast, pre-stressed tank. It would be built onsite in panel sections, stood up, and it would basically be a concrete tank with a steel inner liner and... Yeah, essentially, you could call it double hulled. But there is a steel shell inside the concrete for watertightness. And then, it is wire-wound under tension, so we keep people off the site because, you know, when it's constructed, because of the danger until the wires have set up in the concrete. But it is what they call a precast. Not that it's cast off-site, it's cast onsite, but it's built on the ground and then pieces are stood up in molds that are forms that are brought to the site. And it would be dome, clear-span dome roof, completely enclosed, covered, et cetera. Okay. Bill's asked about the anticipated timeframe. Less than the construction season, it needs to be started, you know, just to be done in our warm time of the year. So, it would have to be, it's probably a three-month construction period. So, it would be either 2014 or 2015 or something like that it would have to be constructed.
I can also tell you that within the budget, we do have money provided for a fence around the tank and also for reforestation in the area. There's been some concerns by the neighbors and understandably so. They don't want it in their backyard, and I understand that. But we do have money in there for reforestation and for the fence around the tank. Hopefully, it will make a good neighbor, won't have many police calls or things like that. There will be a road, an access road going in, which will have a gate. Obviously, there will be lock. There will be a very small building inside of it to have the control valves and things like that that are needed. Our aim is to try to keep it as inconspicuous as possible.
Roger Cody, Lisbon Falls. Would the old tanks be removed from the properties where they exist? And with the...in the second part of the question, would the properties be sold to assist in paying for the new tank?
Roger, at this particular time, we have no plans to remove tanks from either property. I will tell the audience that the Lisbon tank, I don't know if any of you have been up there or not, there are two cell phone towers there that we are generating. The Water Department is receiving, I should say, $50,000 a year from the rental of those two cell phone towers that are there. So, for us to tear that tank down, that just means that the general public has got to make up that money somewheres. The water customers would have to make up that money somewheres. So, I see no reason to tear that tank down at this particular time or sell the property. Mr. Sawtell was asked in one of our previous meetings what the life expectancy of that tank would be if it was not filled with water. And I believe his answer was 100 years. Certainly could last that long. So, as long as the Water Department, Town of Lisbon, is receiving money for the cell phone towers, I see no reason to sell it. The one in Lisbon Falls is a newer tank. It's the one that was painted last. We're going to have to do a little bit of a wait-and-see game when we put the new tank online to see what the pressures do. There's certainly going to be some adjustments that will need to be made. So, I would say that there are no plans by the board members at this particular time to remove any of the tanks that are in existence at this time.
Thank you.
I know the big question out there is, what's it going to cost? How much is this going to cost us, you know, as water customers or as ratepayers or whatever? What we have to do is gain public permission, first of all, to complete the project. We have to present the project to the Maine Public Utilities Commission and they will either vote up or down on it. Once we have that, then we can go to bid. Now, whatever the bids come back at, I don't know. Depending on our engineer to provide us with as accurate figures as he possibly can. I can tell you that on both of the bonds that are going to be presented to you in November, these are maximum figures. They will not exceed that. And the board will look for every conceivable way to keep those figures down so we don't have to borrow excess money. We do have some money to tie into it now, and we're certainly willing to use that. The board has voted to purchase the land from Mr. Uplam. We're kind of hanging back and see what the vote comes out on November. When you go to vote, you'll notice that there are two separate bond issues. I wanted that because I want the people to be able to vote up or down on either project. You can vote them both down, or you can vote them both up, or one up and one down. That's your choice. The board has agreed that if it is voted down, we still feel this is a necessary project and we would come back another year for asking for the same thing all over again, so.
I'm wondering if you can tell me, will any of the labor performed be done by existing Water Department or Public Works employees, or will this all be contracted out to third parties?
I...well, on the tank, it'll all be contracted out. As far as the replacement of the main is concerned, we generally do that. We have our crew that would put the main in. We would contract out services for digging and backfilling and, of course, hot top afterwards where necessary.
So, all of the numbers and the projections are for third-party contractors to do the work?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to just point out that we plan on phasing out the...on our last meeting, we talked about, we're going to plan on phasing the Lisbon Falls tank out of service. And then, slowly, once the system stabilizes, then we'll start seeing what we can do about the Lisbon tank, if we could phase that one out or not. Because I personally don't want three water tanks in town, so I'd like to get it down to one. That's why we're going to a dual-chamber tank so we could hopefully get rid of the two other tanks that we have on service right now, using them for water. I mean, they still might be standing, but hopefully, they won't have any water, so we don't have to pay the cost for painting them, which is due in...one's due in this year, one's due in 2015 for inspection and painting.
I don't know if you have any other questions as far as this is concerned. I was talking about the PUC. We are anticipating a...well, Mr. Adams has said a 20-year bond. I've figured it for a 30-year bond. I'm not sure what PUC would say to that, so we'll have to wait and see what they allow But we're not going to put any more money into this than what we absolutely have to. Oh, and some of the...we'll have to have a study done by Maine Rural Water Association to find out what we need for rates to cover this. Then that will be presented to the board and the board would vote which way to go as far as the rate increase is concerned. Some of the money that would be to take up some of the slack that we're not...from rates we're not seeing from US Gypsum, who is closed up. And also, we've noticed a decrease in the amount of water that's being consumed. It's been a wet summer, and I know that. People aren't watering their lawns or gardens and things like that, so the consumption of water is down. So, we'll have to take, phase that all in and look at it. We'll have a study done on that, an independent study by Maine Rural Water.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm curious. It seems that painting the tanks is a necessity while they're in operation, but what's going to happen to them is they sit there without water in them? Will they be painted or will they be left to rust?
I would...Tim?
I guess I wouldn't paint them if they weren't going to be used for water storage because of the cost. The Lisbon tank will stand for an awfully long time. It's a very rugged tank. It's just not good for a water tank because it's a riveted tank. Every rivet has a tendency to develop leak, leaks, as well as there's no...and it's not welded on the joints, so there's a lot of leakage in that tank when the paint system gets old. But there's enough steel there that even though it wouldn't hold water, it would stand for an awfully long time. It wouldn't be very attractive. So, I think, you know, it would take a number of years before you'd start to lose enough steel so you wouldn't have any scrap value from what was there. But I have a feeling they wouldn't be left very many years before something was decided to be done with them.
All right, the Fitzgerald, longtime resident of Lisbon Falls. I think it's important to note that this...these projects will be paid for by ratepayers and not by the taxpayers. Also, the former Knight Cellotex property, is that on town water? And hopefully, that will be developed and be using water. Probably important to note that to attract future businesses into the town, it is important to have good and adequate water supply. So, for one, I would think that this is a very important project. Thank you.
In answer to your question, Dr., two service lines are going to the former Knight Cellotex. There are two service lines between them.
Two service lines?
Right.
Okay.
One for where the woodlot was, because if you remember, they used to water the wood down, put water on the wood to help debark. And the other one goes into the old plant that's now being demolished.
Hi, good evening, Debbie Berry. Is there a click and play, if you will? Like, let's say there's an expansion, economic expansion in town. Is there going to be an increase for a request for capacity? Is there a possibility, would this be designed to increase that capacity? Is that going to be, is it a click-and-play kind of thing, like a Lego set? Well, maybe that's a bad analogy, but if there is a development, Cellotex, let's say, gets redone, where Rumbell Mill gets redone, and is a demand for more water, is there a possibility with this program that is being designed for additional capacity? Thank you.
In answer to your question, yes. We could provide more water than what we have right now. I believe the pump station in Lisbon is pumping right around 500 gallons a minute, something like that, four to five?
Yeah, four.
400 gallons a minute. And when it was built, it was designed so that, I'm not sure for how long, but it could produce up to 1,500 gallons of water per minute. So, I don't think it would sustain that, but we could easily handle an industry if they came in and required more water.
How many wells are there now in Lisbon and where are they located?
Current wells, we have one in Lisbon Falls that's behind the Water Department office, and that was just refurbished this summer. And I think we're getting around 325 out of that, 300?
We could yield that much. We're pumping that much.
Okay. We could get about 3, 325 out of that well. There's another one across from the town office, down, across the road from the town office, down behind the pines down there, and that's about an equal amount. And the other well is up on Moody Avenue. There are actually two wells on Moody Avenue. That, in theory, what we're supposed to do is pump one well and then switch over to the other well, give one a rest. And we could simultaneously pump both wells if we had to. Not for a long time.
I know, for one, the quality of water in Lisbon Falls is excellent. If anyone has been to Lewiston and drank that water, you wouldn't want to drink it all the time.
Don Fellows from Lisbon, right next to the water tank that exists. I have a question. If I'm reading this right, just for clarification, the...if it's a $2.4 million bond and all expenses actually come to $2.4 million or close to it, you've estimated the metered increase in rates at 30% or 36%? Is that just...I know that's not a totally accurate figure, but is that what I'm reading here?
No, that would be 36.74.
Okay. I'll cede that.
Yeah.
But also, it's been stated here tonight that the...this would be paid by ratepayers and not by the towns, citizens as a whole. That public fire increase of 23.51% is paid by the entire town through the hydrant rental fee, which is currently $292,000, I believe. So, not that it's a problem, it's just that it does affect the entire town, which in effect right now is a half a mill.
You're absolutely correct on that. We don't anticipate borrowing that a full amount of money, though. As I said, those are maximum figures. And if we get a bid back higher than that, then we would not go forward with the project. We'd have to come back to the town again for permission for more money, but I don't think it will. It's awfully hard to project what somebody else is going to charge.
Gail Farr, Lisbon Falls. This picture here, the new water tank and the elevation or lack of the Frost Hill, is this...Upland and Frost Hill? Can you explain this a little more? Is this just a picture or, I mean, is this isn't based on reality? Is Frost...the need for the Frost Hill whole pipeline, the whole length of Frost Hill, to get the right elevation? Is there a connection?
Yes, two different projects we're talking about.
Right.
Frost Hill is just to replace an existing water line, which is basically cracking on us all the time.
And it has nothing to do with the pressure, lack of, or too much?
Well, if we fix the pressure, it could cause more problems than that.
So, it kind of needs to be replaced if we get the new one? They don't necessarily go hand-in-hand, but if you get the new tank, that definitely won't be able to handle it.
Our purpose was to replace Frost Hill anyhow, or try to.
If you could only get one, would that be more important?
Well, for the fire hydrants that are put up on Route 9 that can be used because there's no water pressure up there.
When did you put those hydrants in?
When they did the Frost Hill, or the, excuse me, when they did the up...
Five, 10 years ago, four years ago?
Three years ago.
So, we had no water, fire hydrants up there forever? So, we don't have them activated now for three years. So, what?
That's up to you guys.
No, just helping those hydrants, helping the whole town, the little falls, every hole.
The tank?
The tank.
Right. But this isn't adequate. This needs to be...I guess, which is more important if you can only get one?
I'm going to say the tank.
You'd go with the tank and then, because you know the other one would break down and would have to be repaired?
You don't know that.
We don't know that. Well, that's what you're proposing.
Well, I mean, if it broke down, we'd have to just replace in that section that broke.
So, you go for the tank to get...hmm.
And then, later on, another section would break, so...
Right, well, that's...
By the time we got done, we might replace the whole section at a higher cost than doing it in one piece right now.
Okay, now to switch gears, like this lady's saying about cellulite, what does she call that place?
Night cellulite.
Night cellulite. Right, right. Right, right, I know the place you're talking about. I know it's not your department, but they got a lot of poisonous stuff leaking into the river. Who's, do you guys know who's in charge of that? These guys? When it's their turn? That's getting torn down and, like she says, we're going to make a park out of it?
Well, you hope that it would be business.
It's very costly to repair these mains in the middle of the winter when it's 20 degrees outside and the water is extremely cold and our crew is up to their knees in water working in a ditch to try to repair it. So it's to our advantage to try to get these mains replaced. And we use as a guide to replace mains, the number of breaks or the breaks that we have on a piece of pipe. We have a lot of breaks in time to replace that main. A W, American Water Works Association is, its standard for pipes, life expectancy is 100 years, but it doesn't always hold true.
It's not the only pipe in town that really needs to be replaced, but we only do so much at a time. Been a lot of bandages put on over the last 30, 40 years, and it's come in times some of this stuff's got to be replaced. It's really old, starting to break down. So we're just going to go with it and go.
Any further questions?
I don't need to speak, but I'm going to stick to my guns. I don't know why, if you're going to put a tank up, you don't put it on top of the hill. I know you've got all kinds of excuses that it's too much pressure down in Lisbon Falls, but they always reduce it if you can tend to. I think that you should overlook the way you're going to put that tank if you're going to put one. It's going to be a costly item, and you might as well spend your money once instead of twice. If you're going to do it up on top of the hill, then you can supply the whole area in the town from that one area, but you can't do it where you're going to put your tank. I know you're going to disagree with me, but that's fine.
One of the questions that you raised is, don't forget, it costs us a lot of money in electricity to pump the water, to pump it out of the ground and to push it through the pipes. If we were going to go much higher, it would cost us even more money. Plus, Mr. Upman has designated where he wants us to, what the piece of land that he'll sell to us. He has not, we'd like to have it up a little further, not a lot, a little bit further than that, but he has told us where we could put it. We better follow it if we're going to put a standpipe up there, so. And I don't blame him, it's his land.
Through this whole process, we've, the water department has done a lot of work studying different locations, studying what we need as far as pressure and hydraulic flow. We've worked very closely with Dirigo Engineering. I understand what Mr. Weber is saying, but the study just doesn't verify that that would be a good location for a tank. The, the best location is actually a little bit higher than we are going, but unfortunately we have to use what is available, and the site we have is the one that was available. But it's closer to optimal location than going further up to the top of the hill. There would be just too many complications with going up on the hill, and it would be much more expensive to get it there. Thank you.
Any, have a question? Was there a question?
No.
No? Any further questions? Well, thank you very much. We'll now turn it over to the council.
I'm going to now close the public hearing for the water department bond questions. And we're going to take about a three or four minute break, just so people can get paperwork if they haven't picked it up already or use the restroom. And just three or four minutes, just come right back. Thank you.
Okay. Tracy? We're going to walk a little bit through the past. Some of you here may have, actually have quite a bit of history with the mill, and it's just kind of nice to show some of the old photographs. I like old photographs, so he'll give you an idea of what it used to be. And y'all remember, some of you, the flood in 1936, you've seen pictures, the river did flood. And then the fire of 1987, which changed the whole face of the Rumble Mill and everything that was there. Quite a fire. This is the aerial looking down. This is a bit of an older picture. You can see the catwalk between the brick building and the larger concrete building that's now gone, along with some of the buildings to the right. And this is what it looks like today. This is what people see when they come into our gateway, into the community, and obviously something needs to be done. The proposal, Miller Industries, back in January of this past year, of this year, came to the town office with a proposal for the council. The building had not been in use since 2006. It had been on the market since 2009, listed for $999,000. And it has been on the market and the price has dropped now under, around $600,000. I have walked with the realtor and economic development directors through this building, showing it and trying to encourage people to come here. But walking through the proposal, the Rumble Mill property, there's more than one property involved in this. The building itself is three floors, 25,000 square feet per floor, and it's on 5.5 acres of land that faces a river. The other part of this proposal, which probably hasn't been too much chatter about, is the Mill Street property, down where the old mill used to be, but it was removed as you go on coming to this building. There are five parcels that come with that, and there's about 10.9 acres of that. It completes the land around the paper mill trail. There had been some contamination issues there quite a few years ago. Some mercury containers were broken by kids, broke into a building, and it got into the environment. Miller Industries has removed 80% of that. The other 20% is underneath a stand, a pipe in the river, a water pipe that was mentioned earlier, and the DEP has said to them they don't have to do anything because it's sitting there, it's not floating or going anywhere. But if the standpipe or if that pipe under the water does get replaced, then that mercury will have to be removed. And even if it gets sold to us, the owner of that property or owner of that still is responsible for removal of that mercury. And we were hoping to plan this year to do what they call a brownfield grant, where it was a federal grant to remove that, but we weren't in a position this year to put in our application. We would next September if in fact we do own it. But that, just to give you an idea, the 5.5 acres with the building, right now it's assessed at 221,900. And the assessed value on the 10 acres is 178,400 for a total value of 400,300. That was what her proposal was to the town of Lisbon for $100,000. Associated costs with this whole project, first is a price of $100,000 to acquire all of this. Second, if the council or town does decide to purchase it, if you decide to demolish it, the average price I got from two different contractors was 520,000 to tear the building down and leave most of the material that we could in the basement, which is another 25,000 square feet of space, and remove any excess. Then it would require quite a bit of ground material to get it cleaned up and covered. And if we were to do, remove the mercury from the Mill Street property, we would, and apply for the grant, we would have to do what they call a Phase 1 and Phase 2 analysis and then submit that, so it identifies exactly what the contamination issues are, and then we would apply. And if we were able to be successful, the cost associated with that would be $175,000 to clean that up. And hopefully we would be successful in a brownfield grant. Then there's some legal costs and then a total, basically a total of around $945,000 if you do the bond and if the council chooses to tear the building down and we have the funding for that. That again comes with the proposal. Concerns people had are real estate tax, the current assessed value, like I said earlier, is 221,900. The value, because of where the, the condition the building is in and sitting on the property, it's depreciated. It's an empty building, broken windows, leaky roof, the side of the building, there's parts of the concrete that have coming off. The assessor has depreciated it and the current tax it pays is 5,103. Now, this is just a what if, but if we tore the building down and put another building or to sell part of that property, another building goes on that site, and it's 25,000 square feet, just one floor, and it had a value of 500,000, the tax generated would be 11,500. And that's what the council has been talking about doing. If they acquire this and they tear this down, they would subdivide it and hope to market part of the land, and we, hopefully we would keep the waterfront. Estimated impact to the tax rate, $1 million bond. If we took the bond out for 10 years, it would add 30 cents roughly, it's an estimate, to the tax rate. If you did it for a 15-year bond, it would be 23 cents to the tax rate. The finance committee met last night and wouldn't weigh in either for or against the bond, but they said if you do decide to go out for a bond, they recommend that we do a 30-year bond because the property isn't going away, it's got good value once that building is gone, and it would only impact the tax rate by 16 cents. And I just threw this slide here to show you the current tax rates around. Right now, we're at 23 for a mill rate. Lewiston's at 2644. We're both around 83 and 86%. Brunswick is at 2654, their sales ratio is 70%. Auburn's at 1959, at 100% of value. Topsum is 100% of value at 1665, and Durham is 100% of value at 1922. So the tax rates are somewhat close, except for the smaller, for Durham is a little bit Land use. We're going to talk about land use because this has been something I've been asked a lot of questions about, and I'm going to have our code enforcement officer, Dennis Douglas, talk about what could be done with this property, so you have all that information in front
Break this up into the two separate properties. First off, the Rumble Mill site. Essentially, we have a little over five and a half acres of property there, currently zoned as commercial, and it is in shoreland, but it's in our new shoreland overlay, which is considered general development. With that, our minimum lot size in that area is a one-acre lot with public water and sewer, 200 feet of road frontage, and you're allowed to cover up to 75% of the lot. So looking at possibilities on that property on a 5.6 acre piece, taking out roads, access, things like that, is potentially for developable lots as another way to look at that property. Setbacks, a lot of people have thought that that building would have to be grandfathered to build there. The reality is, in the general development, there's only a 25-foot setback from the water. Haven't measured it, see what we have out there, but 25 feet is pretty close, so the idea of having to build on that exact footprint, I don't think is a real issue at this point with that general development district. Outside of that, the Mill Street property is a little more complex. I do have maps at the office, which will show you the properties and the zoning. There's five lots, combined make up 10.9 acres. Each lot has some unique situations in regards to shoreland, resource protection. One of the lots is in village zone, another lot is limited residential. So there's assortment of different zoning on those lots. So to give you an idea of what could be done there, you'd have to come in and I could show you our land use charts that would help you out with that. There are four of the five lots that are partially in floodplain as well, which have other restrictions that would apply. Essentially, that's it.
Most of this property is surrounded on both sides of the bridge, and the town owns the land that follows the paper mill trail, and this is on both sides of that as well, so we'd make one big parcel for all of us, for the whole town to own all of that and keep it the way it is. The mercury we've talked about, there's been a lot of comments made that this hazardous waste at the Rumble Mill. The only material that's left at the Rumble Mill is lead paint, it's on the walls, it's three feet from the floor up, and it's on the columns. According to BioSafe, who Mrs. Miller hired to go in and do an analysis of what was there, if we were to tear that building down, the parts per million of lead compared to the volume of what that concrete building is, is insignificant. It would be, there would be no environmental impact. Both of these sites have what they call hazardous waste closure certificates, which means they've done their due diligence and cleaned up these sites. And the only other part of the Rumble Mill is where the parking lot is years ago, I think it's 10 years ago or more, some hazardous material and soils was moved away from one of the buildings and mixed with other and put in where the parking lot is, right behind the Rumble Mill. That parking lot is used to encapsulate that. There is a deed restriction. If somebody decides to rip up that pavement, then they will have to pay to have that material removed. Otherwise, if you leave it there as a parking lot, you don't have to do anything. So at this point, we're going to talk about some of the things that we've been working on for the last year and longer, 196 master plan. You want to talk about this?
Yeah.
Amanda Bunker, our planner?
Just hit the page, the button, and go back, she says.
Yes.
The arrow button. Or on the keyboard. Okay. No, you said, you said. One more. Close now. All right. So my role here is the big picture. I've been working with the community on some pretty big picture stuff over the last year or so. We started, I believe it was in January officially, with a series of meetings, public forums, to discuss the vision that the community has for its, for its community center, essentially, excuse me, the 196 corridor, all the way from town line to town line. That includes the Lisbon Falls and the downtown, it includes midtown, it includes Lisbon Village, it includes the commercial area out by the Lewiston line, it's all of it. So we had a lot of discussions about the future of the community. It wasn't just about, you know, the roadway itself, but how important the infrastructure, the economic opportunities, and the residential areas are along that way. So we come to the... So we come to the Wurumbo Mill, and the important piece that I bring from those community meetings and forums was consistently at these meetings, we heard from community members and business members that it was incredibly important to economic development and prosperity to start seeing the town make some proactive investment in improving things in town. One piece in particular was identifying specific properties or locations where the town's help and investment would make things happen in a very positive way for the community. Wurumbo Mill consistently came up at the top of that list. So this was sort of a process that came about where Wurumbo came to the top of the list of things that people were saying, this would make sense from a strategic standpoint. Steve alluded to some of the challenges of this building. It's a beautiful and historic building if you overlook some of the obvious outer pieces that are falling apart. But the ultimate, the real, the big picture is, is it, in redeveloping that structure, the tremendous cost associated with it just to fix the structure itself, and the tremendous obstacle to filling 75,000 square foot with tenants that would pay for that, it's a very big hurdle to overcome. So pulling down that building had to be a real option to consider. And there are possibilities, though, to really draw from the historic nature of this site, incorporate it into the future of this property. We did a few renderings, some sketches to start to illustrate what it would look like. Actually, Steve, if you could jump one slide ahead. Sorry, I'm going to make you run back and forth. I'll go back to that other image. A couple of other factors. We know that the, the bridge over the Andersgoggin, that's a significant project coming up on the waterfront. We know that there are things happening with night cell attacks. That site is gradually being cleaned up, and there are potential redevelopment options, opportunities there. So generally, a lot of action happening along the waterfront. The lower image is probably a little difficult to see. There are some, these are available out in the hallway if you want to take a closer look. We did a photo simulation. This is a view from approximately like in front of Miller's, the gas station there, looking back towards the site. What would it look like if the building wasn't there? And it's, you don't see the before picture, but just to see, okay, it's hard not, it's hard to imagine that site without the building there. But you actually really open things up. You're going to open up views to the water, as well as, as Steve talked about, opening up possibilities for new development and new opportunities. So we had, in terms of the drawings, we did a couple of different illustrations. This one, the previous one showed, this is from the opposite side. This is roughly standing on Route 186 in front of the Old Elks Club, I believe it is, looking back towards Canal Street. You see in this picture, in the foreground, the rail corridor transformed into a trail, which is, is a project that the town is working on, creating rail-trail connectivity, which is a huge recreational health and economic asset for the community if that can go forward. What you see on the back left is the existing brick building on the site, and the building to the right is a new building. That one is architecture similar to the old, to the existing mill, but it's only like a story, story and a half building, much smaller footprint, like your 25,000 square feet, something that you're going to be able to find a tenant for and be able to fill that space. It might represent one of three or four parcels that could be developed. But the key is really making sure that what happens on that corner is something that really contributes positively to the community. It's in the gateway. It's important to the downtown, whether it's a new building like this one or whether it's from the previous picture, a park. It really matters what would go in there, and the town really has a much stronger advantage of, you know, making that benefit the bigger community if the town has better control over the future of it. So in the vision of this, again, this, this particular illustration from the bird's eye view, it, this shows it all as park, but it could easily show park and numerous redevelopment properties. You could, you could have some of both. I know we, we got into it a little bit with the vision discussions, but it would, it is definitely worth considering, not just selling it all off as redevelopment parcels, but including some public waterfront space. People really have a hard time understanding the economic benefits of it, but right now, a place like a public park, especially on a waterfront, is a huge economic asset to bringing in new investment and new, new businesses. This is something that you can see in case studies across the state. So that green space really does enhance. You can, you can have redevelopment sites and have that green space, and that green space helps make downtown businesses more viable because it helps create the sense of community, it helps draw on your natural resource at the river. It really enhances the downtown and Lisbon Falls area in a very important way, and a lot of communities in Maine and all across the United States are recognizing the value
I'll let Tracy Stubber, she's our new economic development director, she's going to talk about some of the previous work that's been done.
Thank you. Back in 2010, this community got together and they, what they put together was envision downtown Lisbon for 2030. This was a 20-year vision for downtown revitalization. Along with that goes with the same planning efforts with the 2000 downtown Lisbon Falls economic revitalization, the Lisbon Comprehensive Plan, the 2008, 2009 envisioning process. And again, this goes along with the master plan that's been, the work that's being done, as Amanda stated, since last year. These are all committees and work that has been done. This wasn't done just within the town. This was a vision that was done with businesses and within the community, and everybody had a part in it. I've been very fortunate to be able to read through some of this, and there is a vision here from what these reports are saying. And I'm going to end it with the Main Street Maine reinvestment statistics. Main Street Maine is a national organization, and they look at downtowns, and this is nationwide from 1980 to December 2012, activity in more than 2,200 communities. The reinvestment in physical improvements from public and private sources was $55.7 billion. The net gain in businesses is 109,664. The net gain in jobs is 473,439, and the building rehabilitations is 236,201, which is the reinvestment ratio. It's $18 reinvested for every dollar spent.
That concludes the PowerPoint presentation. I just, a lot of people have wanted to know the urgency behind this. This came to us in January from Miller Industries, and we did a lot of due diligence, my staff, some of the counselors, and researching through DEP, working with engineering firms that had done numerous studies on the hazardous waste. And the council made it public this summer after many conversations whether they even wanted to bring this forward to the public. And they decided that they wanted the public to really weigh in and give direction if this was something that they thought was feasible. And to Miller Industries, she's been extremely patient with us, and if we do go to referendum and go to bond, that's when we'll make the call if we're going to move forward or just walk away from it, and then she'll have to do something else. But at this time, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Before we move forward, if we could just go over the rules, just because we want to make sure that everybody's aware of them. Toila, do you want to do it or?
I can, I can.
Just in general, because we want to hear from as many people as possible, we would like to keep it to three minutes per person. And we, if you have something more to say, if you just let other folks who have something to say go before you, that would be great, and then that way we can hear from the most number of people. Also, if you have specific questions for individuals, whether it's the town manager or the economic development director or the town planner, go ahead and make sure that you direct your question to that person, and we'll try and answer you right away. So I'll open the hearing. Did I miss anything, Toila? Okay. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and if everyone who speaks will please use the microphone and state your name and where you live.
Okay. My name's Larry Fillmore. I live in Lisbon. First question I have is this $55,000 unaccounted for on your fact sheet. That's not chump change to us. Okay? So somebody needs to account for the $55,000. The next thing is that if we're, we are really in a crossroads here. We can't afford all these tax increases. You're talking about raising our taxes. We need to look at projects that have a positive return for investment. To me, there is so much speculation in there that that's not really a good return for investment. Now, I sat through a joint session of the school, the planning board, and the council, and the school committee is on probation. Their major problem is that they need a gym. Now, for me, that's a return for investment because if we could get off probation, there's a possibility we can get more families to come here, okay? And it would increase our tax base, reducing our taxes. However, that's not even being considered here, and I think that's a problem. And the last thing I have is being performed here in Lisbon that we are paying two, as the last budget has it, $265,000. Why are we paying for a duplicate service? The comm center can be done by Andersgoggin dispatch. It would save us a minimum of $200,000 a year. If you want to use that money, the $200,000 we're already paying, fine, put it to the bond, put it against the bonds, but don't tax us anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. The public, we're trying to give you as much information as we can, so if the council decides to put this into a referendum question for during November, you have as much information to make the decision whether you want to do this or not. That's the point of this meeting, not to debate where the town's spending money for dispatch or investment. The nine, 55,000 short of the million, these are estimates. As said earlier, when we talked about the water department project, we don't have specific numbers until we put things out to bid. We're required to put things out to bid, and that's when we'll know exactly what everything is going to cost. So try to keep your questions to the information that we're trying to give you tonight so you can make informed decisions.
Albert Austin, Lisbon Falls. Why, has the, has the town, that selectman, ever considered condemning that building and making the town, making Ms. Miller tear that down? Has that been any consideration at all?
We have looked at it, and it, I don't believe it can be condemned. That would be a question for the code enforcement officer.
Has the code enforcement officer looked at it?
I've been through the building, but have not looked at it as far as the.
Because I know, I know the city of Lewiston, they're going through all kinds of buildings up there, and they're condemning a lot of those buildings up there. They're making the owner tear them down.
I think that the question of condemning the building is a good one, and I think that something that we need to keep in mind is that we asked Mrs. Miller not to take it down several years ago because we felt that it was worth looking into to try and sell.
That's when the real estate was good and everything was going fine. That was four or five years ago. I'm talking about today.
I, I think that, again, I think your point is good and it's solid. I would like you to just, let's just keep in mind, we're the ones who asked Mrs. Miller not to take it down.
That was four or five years ago, though.
But we asked her not to, and she went along with us. So I, I mean, just out of courtesy.
Okay. My other question is, Steve, you said that, that Mrs. Miller is going to be liable for the, for the mercury. And then later on in your same speech, just right up, just a little while ago, you said that you're going to have, have something in the bond to take care of that mercury. And I heard you say that, Steve.
Yes, I did. There's no guarantee that the town would get the money to, through the brownfield. We're trying to be good citizens with our corporate people in town, and if we are ones who own it, we have the ability to apply for a federal grant, a brownfield grant. And that's, I put that in there so it's a cost associated with that Mill Street property. But hopefully, that's something that next September, we would know if we, if we own the property, that we had the funding to take it out. And if, let me finish. And if there was ever an issue with the water level or anything else, or the water pipe was coming out to be replaced, and we didn't own the property, Mrs. Miller would be responsible for taking out that mercury and paying for it. She paid to have the others' mercury on the land in that area removed.
But if the town of Lisbon owned the property, the town of Lisbon's going to be responsible for it, and you said it right up there.
Can I, Steve, I think, I think that what Mr. Eldridge is trying to explain is that we are not responsible for it. However, as the owners of that property, because we're a town, we would be eligible for a grant to help clean it up, and Mrs. Miller would not have to pay for it. We wouldn't be paying for it. We would apply for a grant, we would apply for a grant that would help pay for it to be mitigated so that neither we nor Mrs. Miller would. But we would have to be the ones who own that property in order to be eligible for that grant. Mrs. Miller as a private owner is not eligible. But we as a town would be able to help her out and, and take care of the problem, not put the burden on a person who is a taxpayer of other current properties, and, and everybody wins.
Okay. My last question is, that whole 10 acres you got right there that you're talking about, is that in the flood zone?
Four of the five lots are partially in floodplain. Yeah, it's four of the five. One of the lots actually.
Use the mic, please.
No, I'm sorry. Four of the five lots are partially in floodplain.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Yeah, I have the maps right at the office if you want to see them.
Roger Cody. I just heard something from you, Mr. Wood, that kind of irritated me a little bit, and the fact that you said, "We've got to consider a little courtesy when dealing with Ms. Miller." Well, what about a little courtesy when dealing with your taxpayers? You know, you've got to stop and realize that that mill, back in 2010, I was sat in a meeting when Ms. Miller's people came to the council, and they wanted to tear that down. I voted all for it. Get rid of it. That looks to me Holocaust all the way. But I wanted to get rid of that mill. And we had people on the council that didn't want to get rid of it. They wanted to reinvest in all this stuff. The bottom line is, that weren't going to cost us a nickel to get rid of that big white elephant. And now, you're going to drive 100,000, a million dollars down the taxpayers of Lisbon's throat for something that was going to be removed completely at no cost to Lisbon. To me, that's not courtesy to your taxpayers that you represent.
Mr. Cody, I try to extend courtesy to everybody, every taxpayer, not just. Every taxpayer, not just Mrs. Miller, every taxpayer. I think that the question is not so much that I want to tear it down, you want to tear it down, somebody else wants to make it into something. That's not the question that we have on the table today. The question that we have on the table is whether we would like this question to go to bond. Okay? So that is the question. The question is not, what are we going to do with it? Those are further questions. That's why we don't have a plan in place, we're going to do this, this, and this, in this order. That's why Mrs. Bunker pointed out the options that we have. So our question today is, do we take this question to bond? Do we vote on it?
No.
I'm not asking for a vote right now.
No.
I'm asking if we should take it to a vote, to the vote, for the voters to decide. So you're, I'm sorry, Mr. Cody, I don't, it's not that I don't want you to speak anymore, but there are over 100 people here, and I would like to hear from somebody else.
The problem, Ms. Ward, that you're not realizing is...
Mr. Cody, you don't have to convince me.
I'm not trying to convince you.
You're just here to give your opinion, and I appreciate that.
And this is my opinion.
Your time is up, Mr. Cody.
My name is Dawn Stein, 6 Douglas Street, Lisbon Falls. I won't have a question till the end. Okay. I've heard a lot of street stories, and a lot of people say that white elephant is because we don't get business. Well, if I was going to build a business in the town, I looked at one on number one, police department. Excellent. Number two, fire department. State of the art. You couldn't ask for a better fire department if you had a paid one. Number three, the schools. Real good. Number four, public works. Small, sufficient. Now, I ride around the streets. Wait a minute now, you don't take care of the streets. You're going to spend $900,000. Have you people rode the streets? No, probably not. I do. And I listen to people. You can't ride on Bird Street, Pine Street, up in Lisbon, Gross Development, Houston Park, they're junk. They're junk. Have you ever walked the sidewalks? Pine Street, Hyde Street, Lisbon, the bushes are growing up. Now, you go down to the transfer station, you've got to ride through potholes, and the public works is right there. And nobody fixes them until I complain. Right, Mr. Bigfett?
Right.
Thank you. Now, any furthermore? What are you going to do with the taxpayers? My taxes went up 400 in two years. What did I get? Two police cars. We're going to have them anyway because they're junk. Now we've got two new ones. I didn't get a dime. No, I'm not for buying that mill. I didn't elect you to be a real estate. You want to be a real estate, get out and go to school.
Fay Brown, lifetime member, lifetime citizen of the town of Lisbon. I'll be buried on the hill when I'm gone. I love this town. It's livable. I love everything about this town. I think when I'm looking at this, that I'm seeing between 1980 and 2012, well, things were a lot different back in 1980 than they are now. We've been at war for years and years. Our country is suffering. We don't know when these grants are going to dry up. They're still the taxpayers' money. And I think when you're comparing things of what's happening today back to 1980, there's a big difference. My question I have for you, Ms. Ward, and I think that you used up a lot of his time, which I thought was unfair. But that being said, I want to know if you will make the decision on the board if it doesn't go to referendum. I'm not in favor of this myself. I don't think we can do it in this town at this time. So, and if you'd answer that, please.
Thank you, Fay. I think that's a good question, and I think it might be one that a lot of people are wondering about also. I think that if the question doesn't go to vote, then the council will have to discuss it and see where we need to move forward, if we need to move forward. The only immediacy was the fact that Mrs. Miller made the offer to us. In other terms, we do know that we need to be, we can't predict the future, just as we couldn't predict the last few years economically. So we'll need to do some serious discussion, and it will probably entail more workshops. And we'll have to take a look at what our vision is and see if that's going in a direction that the town wants it to. Our visioning sessions and our planners' workshops have had very positive input from folks in town, and it has consistently been in that direction. So if we find that we've been going in the direction that we shouldn't be, then we'll have to discuss that and find out what people want. So...
Well, for my money, I will tell you, I'm not in favor of this at this time.
Thank you, Fay.
Yes, good evening, Debbie Berry again. I have probably three questions. On the Town Charter, Section 1.02, Powers and Duties, it has specifically, there's a big, long paragraph, but in that, it says, "Any town purpose." That means police department, library, fire department, et cetera. Now, Section 2, Section 1.05, it means governing functions. Again, I have to refer to the gentleman that said, "If you want to be a real estate agent, that's one thing, but don't take my money and do that." Thank you. Also, Section 92.1, Subparagraph E, a butter sale. If a town council member owns property, abutting that property, and he, you buy this property, is he willing to forego any benefit of that, any profit to him for having purchased that land, abutting the property? It's in the charter. Now, the, I appreciate Mr. Eldridge speaking regarding the hazardous material that is on site. The Lewiston Sun Journal published articles from 2005 to 2007 regarding the hazardous waste that Mrs. Miller and her brother attempted to remediate by themselves without using appropriate DEP or EPA carriers. Now, my understanding is 550 barrels were put into the mill from the Farwell Mill, and at this point, you did mention that there are certificates of remediation. I would like to see them. Because at this point, where Lewiston Sun Journal hasn't clarified that that has been cleaned up, that is still a public safety hazard as we speak, right now. Because if there is a spring thaw, and that mercury lets go out of that pipe, that means the town of Brunswick-Bath is going to get the water from that mercury. It's going to go downriver when the spring floods go. And it was in, when I went to the Historical Society, we had a major flood here that went over the bridge. So that can let go onto that standpipe, that mercury. That's a potential hazard. Now, under the town report on 2011, 2012, we have approximately 85 people in personal RE foreclosures. We have 35 businesses that are also in foreclosures. We have people hurting here. The picture of the town is not pretty, and to put this money into a mill... Now, the other thing, too, is all the notes and meetings that you've had with Miller Industries and Personnel, are those available for us to look at?
There are no notes. I can show you the letters I have given back, I have sent to her if you so like.
Very good. Now, there was also one of...
Mrs. Berry?
Yep, I have one more, I have one more minute.
I was going to...
One more slide that is up there is referring to a Main Street Main reinvestment statistics. Now, that's a nonprofit organization that will give you any information that you desire. If you want it to be positive, they'll give it to you. If you want it to be negative, they will give it to you. Now, if you have it from Donald Trump, who's a private investor that uses his own capital, that's something else. Then we have two opinions. But that particular agency you're using is considered a nonprofit agency, and they will give you the information you are asking. And you're asking for positive information to try and mislead us into this referendum. And shame on you, ma'am, for doing that. Shame on you. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Mr., and I'm going to ask that, you know, we don't, we're not here to berate. Folks have worked long and hard on this. We're here to ask questions and answer them. Before we move forward, Dennis, Mrs. Berry had a question for you about the availability of the paperwork that says that the property is cleaned. Do you have that, or...
We have documentation and closing statements from DEP, documents of all these work.
We have all the documentation in the town office for all the DEP closures, any of the studies that were done by CVA Mahar, who's an engineering firm. The book on their properties is probably this thick, and the work that's been done and what's been remediated. It's all available if anybody would like to see it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gina Golseth. I'm resident of Lisbon Falls. I have recently come to this community, having come from southern Maine Yarmouth area. And I can tell you that I love this community, too. I can echo some of the sentiments of some of the people that are here, but I can also guess that I'm probably not going to be the most popular person when I leave this microphone. I think this is an excellent opportunity for the town right now because there are opportunities that the town has that Mrs. Miller, as a private individual, wouldn't have on this property. And one of them that you mentioned was the brownfields grant. I happen to be an environmental engineer and a geotechnical engineer, worked at CVA Mahar. I also worked in Corinna, on the Woolen Mill, the Corinna Woolen Mill project. The other opportunity that they have here is that the DOT on their 2014 list is the renewal of that bridge that crosses from Durham to Lisbon. And I know that in Corinna, one of the big things was working with the DOT. That gave us the ability to do some things in the town that we might not otherwise have been able to do because there was more funding, there was more coordination. It meant for a better intersection, a lot better traffic flow through that town. And I understand there's a lot of animosity about the potential for this kind of project because people don't want to pay. The issue is, a lot of the past has to be passed. We have to look for the future of this town. And, because it is a great community, but we, there are a lot of economic difficulties right now. So how are we going to fix that? We can sit and talk about the past and how, you know, we don't want the things that have happened past, but we've got to find a way for this town to survive. Because it's a wonderful town. I chose to bring my children here and raise them here because it feels like home. So how do we make sure this community thrives? There's got to be a plan. And I understand that we don't, you know, we don't want to be funding this and funding that and funding the other. The town has an opportunity here because there's other, there's other authorities. There is the brownfields grant that we could possibly do. There is working with the DOT. There's a lot of opportunities that, you know, could be. So I just want to stand up and say, the past is the past. Let's try and focus on the future and think about how we can keep this beautiful little town a perfect place to raise a family.
Any other questions?
I think that, this Larry Fillmore from Lisbon. We gathered here today to talk about this project, to see, and you're looking for guidance from us as to whether or not you should go ahead with this project. I think at this time, that a show of hands on who is for this and who is against this will give you your guidance that you're looking for. Thank you.
I hope you'll continue to listen to the other folks who wanted to speak.
I'm sorry, you want to slide there?
It's okay.
I'm Brenda Heath. I'm from Lisbon. I called the town this year, trying to get them to fix a piece of road on the Hughton Road. They didn't have any money for it until the new budget come in. Even though it was a hazard, half the tire was gone on an uphill grade, and people were crossing the road to go over on the other side to get up over that hill. That was a danger. It was left until two months later. I think the developers are the ones to handle the property. We're not gauged to do that. That's waterfront property. There should be a lot of developers, especially if you're talking from gypsum all the way down. There should be other people that would be interested instead of the town. Another thing is, how much is the insurance going to be? Or the upkeep on this land? Because there's got to be extra costs associated. And you've got to look at want versus need. Right now, we need some relief, and we need some people looking at what's going on in the town as far as our taxes, because we're going to be broken before we're done. We can't keep going. I just got my tax bill. It went up by another $200. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Brenda. I'm going to let Mr. Eldridge respond to, part of, it wasn't a direct question, but how many people have been interested in that property during the time it's been for sale?
In the last four to five years, it's been probably 10 developers who have walked through the building and looked at it and have no interest in developing it because they'd never get a return on what their investment would be because they couldn't charge enough money per square foot. That's the cause. Can I just remind everybody that the reason we're here is so you can gain information, so you can go to the polls, if we go that far, and voice your opinion at the polls. That's what the council is asking you to do. Make your opinion known by going to the polls and voting. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Steve.
Mary, we're speaking, Lisbon. And I got questions about the parking lot area. You said, "As long as the cap is on, there's no problem." What's holding that cap? What's the material?
It's just asphalt, as far as I know. I'm not sure what's underneath it.
Okay. But you said it's hazardous under there, and that would have to be removed. Am I correct?
If the cap was removed, yes.
I have never known asphalt to last a million years. At some point, it's going to need to be removed. That's expensive. I think that that also needs to be considered. What are you doing all the renovations? If you're going to do a clean site, do a clean site. Any of that cap comes up, the water drainage gets into the water, who's going to be liable? Lisbon. DEP is going to love us. We're going to support them. The other thing I want to say is, nobody here said that they looked at what it would take if we were to condemn that building. Evidently, not all areas were looked at when you did the study. So you need to do a complete study to look at all the options. Because if that needs to come down, we shouldn't pay for it.
I would like a clarification on this meeting. I came tonight because I thought you wanted to hear from us what our ideas were about going forward or putting it on a referendum. I would like an answer to my question. If it doesn't go to referendum, will you then be able to make a decision on your own without it going to referendum? You can't do that, can you?
No, we can't. And we wouldn't want to anyway. Because if we, if we hear that we, that people don't want to go to referendum...
All right. Then why wouldn't you go with a show of hands tonight, just so you can have a better idea of where we're coming from? That's why we came here, to let you know what we felt about it.
I'm not saying we will or won't. I just want to wait till we hear from everybody and have answered all the questions and wait until we're winding down. So I'm not saying whether we will or not, I'm going to discuss with council.
This evening, you might be willing to have a show of hands.
At this point...
When we're done talking. Thank you.
At this point, I don't know, Fay, but I am keeping it in mind, and I will consider it.
Well, you've had two people up here saying we'd like to have a show of hands, so I hope you do consider it.
I am considering it.
That's why we're here. Thank you.
Dorothy Fitzgerald again. We just heard Mr. Eldridge say that there have been, what, eight to 10 developers that have gone, that there have been eight to 10 developers that have gone through the building, and they cannot see a return on the investment. The mill, property right now, the mill and the land, 5.5 acres with approximately 1,000 feet river frontage, is on the market for, the last I knew, $699,000. And yet, you, all of you up there, are asking the taxpayers to bond $1 million? And what's, and you can't see, and you're...
And what's, and you can't see, and you're, where's the return on the investment if investors buying it for $700,000 can't see a return on the investment?
Doc, the group of people up here aren't asking you. They're asking you to go to the polls and vote if you think it's a worthwhile project.
We're asking you if it...
We brought it to you so you could weigh in and go into the booth and vote.
I think the question has been answered.
Alvin Austin, Lisbon Falls. Now, Steve, you just said that this meeting is supposed to be to tell the council that we, whether we want to go to the polls or not. Mr. Eldridge, you just said that the council's already made up their mind, they're going to go to the polls and put it on the agenda. I just heard you say that.
No, I said...
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Yes, you did. We're here tonight to let you know...
Mr. Austin, please calm down.
Listen, we're here tonight to let you know that, at least I know, that we're not interested in buying that mill. But Mr. Eldridge just said that you already made up your mind, you are going to go to the polls and let the whole people decide.
I'm going to agree with you that it sounded like he said that all...
Yes, he did.
...in conversation with him previous to the meeting. And right now, I am telling you from the council, and I think the council is behind me, that we are here for exactly the reason that I told you we are here, to decide whether we're going to the polls.
That's not what he just said. And I just want to let everybody know that.
Thank you.
Bill Bauer, Lisbon Falls. Two questions. One, is the purpose of this project to create a park or real estate that can be sold for development or business?
There are a lot of different options. Some of the, most of the options include at least a little bit of green space along with parcels that can be sold so that businesses can go up to increase the taxability of that...
Okay. Now, my next question is to Mr. Douglas. Got his attention. I believe there are some very stringent rules on anyone building in a floodplain. Is Lisbon carrying with that? What, could you give, excuse me, could you give us kind of a brief overlay of what would be needed for someone to construct a business in this four out of five, I believe you said, parcels that are in a floodplain? And is it really going to be feasible for them to do that?
You're talking about the Mill Street properties? The five lots on the Mill Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, four of the five lots are partially in floodplain. There are sections that aren't, so it's possible to build on a lot that has floodplain if you're not in the floodplain area. So you'd have to look at the individual lots on the map. It's a little complicated on how the lines run. One of the lots isn't in floodplain at all, and it's actually not shoreland. It's the largest of the bunch. It's a 5.6 acre piece. That's limited residential with no other restrictions.
Last I knew, if you were going to try to get a, secure a loan to construct a business and it fell into a floodplain, you had to have flood insurance, which is very costly.
I think that's why I wanted to clarify you were talking about the Mill Street properties, right? Not the Rorumbo Mill.
Well, any of the properties down in this area...
Correct. Building in the floodplain is obviously, is a big issue. So on the properties, like I said, that have partially floodplain, there's sections of that property that you could build and not be in floodplain. But surely, building in the floodplain is a problem from insurance standpoints and everything else, and state permitting and whatnot.
Would you give an estimate as to how much of the property would be in the floodplain? Half of it? Three quarters of it? Quarter of it?
If I may, I just want to be clear. Are you, we're talking about redevelopment properties. We're talking about at the Rorumbo site, not at the, and when you're talking about the floodplain properties, that's the Mill Street site. So those are two different areas that we, I just want to be sure you're clear.
I just want to make sure that we're not going to have this happen down there and have properties that's available and somebody can't come in and build because it's in a floodplain.
Right. No, and my understanding is, we're only talking about kind of the redevelopment opportunity at the Rorumbo site. And Dennis has done a thorough look at shoreline and floodplain, and those are not constraints to development.
They're not in flood...
On the Rorumbo site for redevelopment properties. And he looked at subdivision opportunities for commercial lots. Mill Street, however, is a different set of properties, and that is floodplain, and that is a different scenario.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. I didn't mean to...
Make sure we do our some...
Dean Willey, Lisbon Falls. I have more of a statement, and I'm really nervous, so I wrote it down. So I'm sorry if it takes a little bit long. So I'm just going to read it. And I hope you guys can just take note of what it says. Chairman Lower Shell mentioned a couple of things during the August 20th meeting that stuck in my head. He stated, unless you invest in what you have, it will never get any better than what it is. And that business needs to have foot traffic. I could not agree more. What will bring business and people to Lisbon and Lisbon Falls is the rejuvenation of the schools and public infrastructure. The first thing families look at when they're in the market for a home is the school system. If the high school is in the town, is the only one, and it's on probation accreditation status, regardless of whether it's structural or not, it may turn many away. The school department has plans and propositions in place within their five-year plan that does exactly what the chairman pointed out. Brings in foot traffic, invests in what you have. Some investments, as we discussed in the joint meeting, were adding a gym, renovating the existing gym into an auditorium and performance art center, which Superintendent Green mentioned at the joint meeting, will almost immediately qualify us for specific performance art grants. They also mentioned constructing a track. The track teams, men and women's, have won eight straight MVC titles, numerous individual conference, state, regional, in some cases, national titles, yet they are the only team unable to hold regular season home meets at home. The last home meet held in Lisbon was before 2005. This, in my view, and many, many other citizens of this town, is terrible. In addition to the well-earned track will allow regular meets, championships, et cetera, to be held here. It will benefit the town in general. All these projects bring much-needed foot traffic to the town and will allow people and entrepreneurs from out of town to see and use the businesses here and possibly open up more, easing the tax burden on the people of Lisbon and Lisbon Falls further. Moreover, they will see that we are willing to invest wisely and not recklessly in our town's infrastructure and that we take pride in. The options, the options put forward by the school committee and Superintendent Green in their five-year plan almost immediately bring funds to the coffers to help self-support and sustain programs where resources are short or non-existent at the current time. Equally, these investments, I reiterate, have great potential to remove Lisbon High School from the Niasque probation and possibly bring folks to Lisbon who are currently turned off by its status. In my opinion, acquiring, demolishing, demolishing and renovating the Rorumbo Mill as proposed does nothing to improve the worsening current infrastructure of Lisbon and Lisbon Falls. It does, however, leave us without much-needed return on investment. Thank you.
My name's Robert DeWitt, and I don't usually come to these meetings. But there was one thing that was brought up here earlier that I'd like to know, maybe you could answer me. They said several years ago, or half a dozen years ago, that Mrs. Miller wanted to tear this building down. What I'm wondering, if some of you could go to her today and say, yes, you can tear it down, and she can get into the real estate business, and we taxpayers won't have to get involved. Thank you.
I'd like to know how many registered voters there are in the town?
7,500.
So this is just a small sample of the voters.
Yes, it is.
So my opinion is, I think you guys ought to take it to the polls and let everybody in the town vote on it. Instead of, I mean, this is the way some of the town meetings used to run. So a small portion did the whole thing for the whole town. So I'd like you to just consider sending it to the voters. It's going to pass or it's going to fail. Vote it on by the whole town, not just the people here at this meeting. Thank you.
I get this feeling, I hate looking at the Rorumbo every day, but the thing is, I get this feeling after reading the latest article in the Times Record, like everything is being buttered up, buttered up. It's like, this is supposed to be a business deal, but it sounds like Mrs. Miller is my mother and I got to treat her good. I don't know, there's no business deal. And where are you coming up for when you can't make a dollar on something and you're still treating mother that well? I'm going to have to say, Mom, sorry. We just can't do this. And that's the way I feel about it. When you're dealing, no matter who you're dealing with, your neighbor, or your mother, or father, or Mrs. Miller, it's got to be a good business adventure for us. And really, it is all right at this point sticking it to us. Amen.
Wayne Plummer, Lisbon Falls. I can add a little bit of history to the Rorumbo Mill. As a kid, I grew up right there on Davis Street. The parking lot behind that mill used to be a ball diamond. The dump is beyond that ball diamond on the riverbank. That's where a lot of stuff was disposed of and dumped right up there. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but you was talking about stuff being buried in that parking lot. Years ago, there used to be a little stadium there and a ball diamond. That's where the town ball team used to play ball. So that's something you may want to look into. Beyond that fence, up in there, and look at it. And if this should go to a vote, is this going to be a special election, or is this going to go on the November ballot?
November ballot.
November. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're going to cost us more for a special election. Thank you.
Can I speak?
Thank you.
The last time that we took something to an election and you asked the people what they wanted, and Steve says, we want to know what the people want. We want to know what the people want. We wanted to vote on our budget. Over 2,000 people voted in favor. And what did the council do? They blew their nose at us and did never do anything about it. So what makes us think that this is not going to be the exact same one? We can vote all week long. It's not going to help a thing unless you people do what we ask you to do. Bottom line.
I might be telling my age a little bit, but flood zone. I seen the water to the Bollin Alley. I seen the water to 196 in the railroad tracks. I seen the water down at the US Gypsum to the bridge. Flood zone, remember.
I'd just like to say that there's a lot of negativity in the room. And in my daily interactions with my neighbors and other people that live in this town, there's a lot of positive feedback coming your way. So I think we should take it to a vote.
My name's Steve Welsh. I've been a longtime resident of the town. I get the fact that the Rorumbo Mill is an eyesore. Everybody gets that, I believe. We all want to do what's right for the town, I feel. And I feel that you guys want to do that as well. But people are hurting. People are hurting not only economically, but in their own, in their own households as far as paying for different things, their kids going to school, the whole nine yards. This town should be worried about upgrading the school, the roads like Mr. Stein indicated, sidewalks, the infrastructure that you talked about before as far as the water. I get that. Going into real estate and buying this mill is not the right choice for this town. And I think that everybody here has displayed that to the selectmen and the town officials. And I think you really ought to think about that. I mean, everybody's taxes are outrageous as they are. You're comparing the town of Lisbon to Lewiston, Brunswick, Topsum. It's not even comparable. Not even comparable. This is a small town. We don't have nearly the size of people that the town of Lewiston has, or Auburn. And for us to take on a tax burden more than what we're paying already is outrageous. I came here after being in the Marine Corps. I came back here to live. I built a house with my family. It's public knowledge. You can go to the town office and find out what I'm paying for taxes in this town. $9,500 a year is what I pay in taxes, and it's not even waterfront. Okay? I do that because I want to be in this town. I didn't do that to buy real estate on the river. Thank you.
Am I allowed to speak a third time?
Let me just see, is there anybody who would like to speak, or we can, okay? Go ahead, Doc.
I'm going to make some people happy. I'm going to make a lot of people not happy. Three summers ago, I had some potential buyers and I toured that mill, the Rorumbo Mill. Looks like a piece of crap outside. At a previous council meeting, I asked the counselors and Mr. Eldridge, you're asking the people to spend a million dollars to buy a piece of property sight unseen? I suggested guided tours. The building on the inside is amazing, absolutely amazing. It's historical. It's a landmark. I would hate to see it torn down. On the other hand, I agree with Mr. Austin. Driving up here from Route 196 to the school, it's a nice sidewalk. The weeds are up to here on the sidewalk. You lay off people in public works department. You lay off people in the parks department. You lay off people, there are not enough people to cover the town office when people go to pay their taxes or to register a vehicle. You wait in line 15 minutes or more, half an hour. I've heard people complain. You close the town transfer station one day a week to save pennies. I've gone up to baseball games between the road that goes to the transfer station and the baseball field. I'd call it a dust bowl, but it's not a bowl. The dust, when the wind blows, the dust blows there. You can't take care of what you have now and you want to take on something additional? How do you plan on paying for it and taking care of it once the initial investment?
Thank you, Doc.
No answer?
Ross Cunningham, Lisbon Falls. I would like to take a minute to thank you for putting this together. I haven't decided if I'm in favor or against this project yet. I will vote in November if that's what you choose to do. I did have a quick question. What is the plan for the monies that you gain from sale of the parcels? Are you reinvesting that in this property or are you doing something different with it? Thanks.
Hey, did you...
Response to Ross's question, I don't think we've got that far. I would imagine what they would do is pay down the bond with it, I would hope.
If I can ask, I, my house was just taken out of the floodplain a few years back. I'm on Booker Street, which almost borders on Union. I'm assuming that the floodplain still extends up almost that far. So that being so, how do, how do we protect those parcels from floods unless the dams that we've put in can regulate it so that we don't get a flood coming up that far? But they've happened, and I paid flood insurance for the first 20... 26 or 7 years that I owned my home. I've been in there now for about 40, I guess.
We actually just received the new FEMA maps, which come out every, I would say 10 years or so, that they redo them. There was actually very, very little changes in Lisbon in regards to the lines that they draw for floodplain. We don't establish floodplain. Back to the comments earlier on remembering floods in certain areas around Booker Street, I don't doubt that and I don't question that. When I say floodplain, that's just purely what's shown on the map that's provided to us by FEMA, and that's what we have to go with, or that's what insurance companies go by to determine if you're in floodplain or not. Do I hold a lot of faith in those lines? No, I've seen areas that are marked in floodplain where the house is 30 feet above, you know, on a cliff overlook in the water. It's never going to flood. So you have to hire surveyors and engineers to go out and certify your property if you question the lines, and then they'll take them out of floodplain or not. But you're welcome to come in and see the floodplain maps. I have them all in the office. You can see the line down in that area. It wraps around. It's got some pretty funny areas in my mind, especially when it comes to Davis Street, because I've heard reports of that flooding over. But again, I don't establish those lines. It's provided by FEMA, and it's the maps that we have to go by. So I do have them all available, and anybody's welcome to come in and take a look.
Hi, my name is Deb Wagner, and I live in Lisbon Falls. And I really hope that you bring this referendum to the voters, because I think it will give people a chance, you know, to vote it straight up and down, but also a little chance to dream and with something very visible. I remember when they made the initial changes to the high school, it was all in the outside of the building and putting up a sign, and, you know, you just felt like they're working on it. And I think if we did this as a town and we took down that building and we made it, you know, the land very desirable, it would be really visible to a lot of people who go on that one Route 196 corridor. So I hope you bring it to the voters who will decide up and down. And I want to thank you for all the work that all of you have done on this project, just to be able to bring it to us and get a lot of our questions answered. Thank you.
Connie Stessel, Lisbon Falls. Just a quick question. If it was sold to a private buyer, would the people of the town have any control over what went there? Like, could an ugly factory end up, you know, in this very visible spot?
Ultimately, the control we have is just based on the zoning we have in place, which right now that's zoned as a commercial zone. So there's land use charts we have at the office. We'll show you all the uses, but when it comes to commercial, that's a very broad spectrum on what can be there. So to have a control over specific types of commercial businesses, no, we would not. It would just be what is allowed in the commercial zone would be allowed. So that would be the control we have.
Thank you.
If we own...
That's not, that sounds like we have much control.
If we own the property, that's a different, if we actually, or the town owned the property, then you could do things in regards to your deed and deed restrictions that could essentially gain some control over that property versus the way it's zoned now and independent person buying it.
Right. So I think it should go to a vote. I think people, the people of the town should have a chance to vote on this.
Mary, we're speaking Lisbon. If we did decide not to do anything, or we wanted control over that commercial land, town could do an ordinance, take care of the issue.
I think we're going, I think we're going to wind down. Is there anybody else who would like to say something? I know there are quite a few people here who haven't sent.
Hi, my name is Lou Agathos. I've listened to this whole presentation. I can tell you that I grew up in this town. I went all the way to college, and I had my career elsewhere. But my last job was working for industry and conglomerations and buying up properties like this. And we wouldn't have touched this with a 10-foot pole. Every property that we looked at like this was owned by somebody like Mrs. Miller. The property became uneconomical. They were tired of paying taxes on it. And out of the goodness of their heart, they donated it to the city, or they donated it to their college. And then they were stuck with it, with all the cleanup, with all the problems, with all the trying to develop it, and with all the trying to get somebody to pay taxes on it. And no businesses would come in and buy them. I just want to tell you that. I wouldn't bought this. I would have looked at the pollution problems. We go in there and we say, "It's $175,000, and we may get a grant." But you know, it could be $2 million, and you may not get a grant. There's no guarantee of what you're going to find, and there's no guarantee you're going to get the money to clean it up. Now, if you think that's an eyesore, you ought to buy up the moxie sore and clean that up. And you ought to do a number of other things in the town. But that property can really come home to haunt you, and you better know it. You can put it to a referendum, but you owe it to the people to tell them the truth. Thank you.
Josh Holmes. I live in Lisbon Falls. I just wanted to touch on one of the things that was mentioned by Mr. Eldridge. He had like 10 businesses in the last few years come in and look at it. Nobody wanted to invest in it. And from my point of view, I think that you guys could do a little bit more work in proving that this is going to be an investment that we can see some returns on. I certainly haven't, I don't feel like I have enough proof that we can do something that, in a public manner, that we can do something that a private industry wouldn't be able to make a return on their investment. So I think that you need to provide maybe just a little bit more proof that this is going to be a good investment for the town before we move forward. Thanks.
For the record, can you state your name and where you live? Thank you. Mr. Austin, before you begin...
I only got one quick question.
That's okay. You're going to be the last speaker of the panel when we move forward.
I'm glad I'm the last speaker. Before you guys decide anything, a referendum or anything, I really, really, really think you ought to consider condemning that building and making Mrs. Miller tear it down. They do it all over the city of Lewiston. I don't know why the city of Lisbon, the town of Lisbon Falls can't do the same thing. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you.
I wish you would have given us a warning, five more minutes or something like that versus last speaker. Yes, thank you. Bata Welsh, Lisbon. I also want to say thank you for all the work that you guys have done. I know it takes a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of sweat. I understand that. That is also your job. So my thought tonight is this. This is just one bond that you guys want us to vote on. That's $1 million. I also know that the school has some very important things that we need to invest in. That's $6.5 million bond that I'm sure they will come to the town and ask us to vote on as well, along with all the other investments on Route 196. So I think we're jumping the gun today by voting on a mill. I'd like to know, on your priority list, where is the mill? And if it's not number one, then we shouldn't be voting on it. I'd like to see, I don't know, at what point will you guys come out with some kind of list, 1 through 100, specific, not general, oh, we're going to tackle this street? I want to know, when is this priority list going to come out? And I think at that point, it would be much wiser to at that point talk about, okay, number one, we'd like to take this to bond, so that people know what kind of future bonds are coming out and vote on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. So...
I haven't spoken at all.
No, you haven't.
I'm Don Fellows from Lisbon. Thank you very much for putting this on. I just had a thought, and that is, since our meeting that we had jointly a couple of weeks ago, a week ago, with the school department and with everybody that's up here, we sat in that meeting for over two and a half hours and never came up with any priorities. A lot of people had thoughts. I think it is incumbent upon the town council to take the first step to go to the school department, and let's figure out what is number one. Is it the mill? Is it the Performing Arts Center gym? Is it forget it all and put it in roads? Is it the water department towers, or just the new water line? Let's, I know everybody's an independent entity, but I think that we, for the sake of the town, we need to have some joint conversations and some joint prioritization.
Thank you, Mr. Fellows. Okay, this really is going to be the last speaker, because...
What if there's someone behind me? Frank Hogan. I've been in town my lifetime here. And I'd like to thank everybody for the hard work that you've done. I mean, that's a lot. I've seen the paperwork and the brochures, and, but the idea is, we don't need to be the owner of it. Find a nice owner of the rumble mill project. Bring all your nice ideas to them. I think they're great. I think the townspeople would say that, you know, a little park down there, new building. I think even Larry would like to go down there and get a hot dog, maybe. And, I mean, that would, that would, you know, make the town look great. But also, I want to say that the corridor project that you guys are working on, don't give up on that. Because I'm a real believer in the town to make this place better. We got the moxie festival. I mean, that's the largest in the world, ain't it? I mean, so they brag it up to be. And it's very nice. It's real good. And Ross, he's a real push on community projects and all the stuff Ross has done. So, you know, all the homework that you've done, it's a great thing. So if we could get a private investor to come in, and you can lay all that stuff out, and he might say, Jesus, maybe we can make something out of this. We can make some money out of it. But for the townspeople, the times are hard right now, and, you know, I got kids in this town trying to pay taxes on two houses and our houses, and like Steve said it well, I mean, our taxes are twice what they should be. So appreciate what you guys have done on that, and my vote is no. Anyone else's vote, no? I want to see a hand right now. Yeah. So that's what I thought was in here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fellows.
But that doesn't mean you didn't do a good job. But as far as the rumble mill project goes, try not to waste any more of our tax dollars on that. Thank you.
So, to finish up, I've been keeping a little bit of a tally here as we're talking, as we're listening to questions from people. We have a lot of people who have asked great questions. I think a lot of those questions could be answered at some of the planning workshops that we do. And I think a lot of the questions come out of a lack of knowing what's going on, and so, or what we're planning, and keeping a, they haven't made a decision. That's just my personal rough tally that I made as we were going along. So we're hearing every side of the fence today. As Mr. Wells pointed out, there's a little over 100 people here this evening with over 7,000 voters. That is a small percentage, and there is a reason that we have a council with council votes rather than town meeting, because the town decided that that would be a more democratic form of government for our town. We have a lot of things to think about on the council. We all need to talk with each other. We need to talk with Dennis in the codes office. We need to talk with Mr. Eldridge. We need to talk with Mrs. Bunker and Tracy Stubber. We have a lot to talk about and we have a lot to think about. I really appreciate, and I know the entire council and everyone who's been working on this appreciates the fact that all of you came here tonight. I appreciate the fact, especially that it was suggested to us at the original hearing, that we have the hearing in a larger place, because although we only had about 60 people at that hearing, we did get over 100 here. So it was a really positive thing. I encourage everybody to talk with their neighbors, look at the information that we have available in the hallway, find out more, ask more questions. We're going to do the same thing. It's why we're here, and it's why we asked you to come here, so that we could hear the questions that you have. And here, there was a lot of input that was positive in every aspect, whether it was pro or con. A lot of the information, a lot of the questions that you asked us tonight have helped us to look at the information from another point of view and to hear what you feel and what you want us to do. So we're very appreciative of that. That's why we're here. We encourage you to continue to call us, email us. All of our information is public, and it's on the town website. And if you don't have the internet, you can call the clerk's office and ask for our phone numbers or information. I know that every one of us look forward to hearing from voters. We do want to hear what you have to say, not just in a hearing. Public speaking isn't for everybody, and we understand that. So we do have a lot to think about, and once again, thank you for coming. And if we have no further business, I'm listening for...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? This meeting is adjourned.